Can you talk again?
Yes.
So just again, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
President.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
President.
And Councilmember Kostski is absent today.
So the first item we have here is a request for legislation. It's twenty-four dash seventy-one. This is a resolution authorizing the city of Binghamton to submit an application for funding from Empire State Development Corporation to restore New York communities. Initiative on eight. Looked at this earlier, but do you want to just walk me through what we got here?
Sure, that's great. So essentially, the Restore New York program allows municipalities to apply for one grant request as part of downtown revitalization, historic building rehabilitation, new construction, which the city awarded last year. This year, it's been great to partner with Broom County, County Executive and the Chairman of the Legislature to allow for both the city of Binghamton and Broom County to both submit applications for projects within the city. The first project and why Owen and Mark are here are is One North Depot. And so this would be a city application to support a grant request for a new project at One North Depot. Basically, there's kind of a history here, which I'll kind of give a little bit of a run through and then turn things over to Marvin Owen. But there was a project that was in the works from many years ago, starting with a two million dollar grant award, which was made in twenty sixteen from another owner and not Marvin Owen. In two thousand and eighteen, the IDA approved incentive financing and a tax break for that project. There has been no activity at that building and no future development happening. And so from the city's perspective, it's a historic asset that we want to get in the right hands and we want to help support a project that brings that property back online. New housing opportunities that are there. Again, it's a historic asset. It's really important that we continue to support development over the Schenandoah Street Viaduct on the near north side. And, you know, in talking to Mark and Owen, this is a project that could deliver new housing units. Again, helps save that historic building. Mark has a track record of dealing with, you know, complex historic properties, notably the train station and, you know, working over many years to complete that, having it as not just a, you know, a viable building, but a huge asset to the Stadium District, downtown Binghamton, et cetera. So Restore New York requires a resolution for the legislative branch, requires a public hearing, which was set last night. And this would be the city's application to the Restore New York program for this year. We've had great success with Restore New York, getting funding for one eighty-seven Clinton Street, which was an affordable housing project, a new construction, as well as Restore New York funding. And I'm blanking on the other one that we got last year, but I'll return to that. But it's a great program, very popular with municipalities. And I'll leave it to you folks to maybe talk a little bit about your vision for the project and where things stand.
Can I ask one question before you start it? Does like the two million that was awarded before, does that transfer to this or?
No, that has been.
Pilot. All the agency stuff is.
That's correct. That's. It's done. Yeah, it's over. I wish it could. The two million would be great, but that's been closed out by E S D and the agency is in the process of, you know, closing out the pilot for that.
What's the? Sorry, Mark. Might be jumping right into this, but what's the, so what's the current like ownership and site control of?
So we're in the process of securing a contract on it. There's just been a couple of comments with their current owner. I think the current owner has got some other projects that are requiring a lot more time and finances. I just don't think that this is a reality for him to think about. So just to give you some quick history, this project originally. I'm assuming you're all from the area here. It started in two thousand and four with Ari Mizel back in that.
And he did one section of.
He did.
And we had on cue down there for.
Correct. So his vision, his vision was good, his timing was probably a little bit premature. And he finished phase one of the building, which I own some units in. And reside, by the way. In one, the. The additional buildings next door have been in quite some disrepair. At one point, I think they were foreclosed and not by our, from Ari, but I think Ari had sold one of the build, the remainder of the buildings to a gentleman in Florida. Subsequently, he lost it in foreclosure. The county had sold it or taken it back and sold it to Mr. Bishop. And there really hasn't been much activity. And over time now, I've watched this building really deteriorate to the point where, you know, condo owners in our building wanted to take some sort of legal action either against the owner or some sort of level of enforcement through the city of Binghamton. Because there's just, there's issues there. So the short of it is after talking to the current owner with, you know, he was going to put a roof on for the last couple of years, I think last year, maybe the year before, on the one building, the actual roofs collapsed and I think it might even be on the second floor.
I was through there in probably twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen.
It's a big skylight now.
Yeah, with the, I think the brewing company folks who I think Josh were considering taking some of the first floor space.
Yeah.
Similar what they're now actually doing in Johnson City. And yeah, it was, the roof was questionable.
You're just getting to the point now where.
It's getting dangerous.
It's dangerous. I think it certainly poses a danger to the building's contiguous. And you're also looking, getting to a point where eventually the juice isn't worth the squeeze and you might have to look at demolishing these buildings, which is, you know, one thing that happened unfortunately with the, with the O'Neil Ross Building. You know, which we're obviously trying to, I love to rehabilitate buildings, but it's also got to make sense. And none of these projects possibly, you cannot take, unless you hit the lottery and money's not an option, they cannot be done without some sort of assistance through, you know, grant or some sort of government funding. So the short of it is that we reached out, well, Josh reached out to me a couple of months ago. And it doesn't sound like he plans on moving forward. There may also be some financial hardship there, which I don't think it's a reality for him to take on this project because I think this project probably is somewhere in the, you know, fifteen to twenty million dollar range. He did a fairly nice job with his renderings and floor plan, but I'm not so sure that we would utilize what he has done because I think he really cramped a lot of units in there. And we're looking at other things as well because, you know, we'd like to maybe maintain a little bit of a commercial element to that space. That being said, it's something that can't really require a lot of parking because there's just a shortage of parking. I understand that he's had some conversations with the railroad with respect to taking some of their space or using it or renting it. I can't speak on his behalf, but I, but I don't think it's anything that's set in stone and I wouldn't even like to claim rights of it right now, so we can only deal with what is in front of us right now.
Is the. Eight or nine year old memory here. Is the, is the very like tip of the building still owned by the railroad or something or is it all?
It's all, yeah, it's all, that's it. They, I think Norfolk Southern used to rent that corner.
Something like.
So now looking at it, while I have spoken to Owen, who's done some projects downtown and most of my holdings, I should say all of my real estate holdings are in downtown Binghamton. And they span from, you know, Corv or Washington to, to the Lackawanna or to Depot. So my general focus is really on the, on the core of downtown. Obviously, it's pretty much short, and there were some engineers. We've asked, part of our contract diligence, we've asked him to provide us with all of his engineering reports. And I think even though, even applications that he has made for funding, just to kind of see how he's. Both these, you know, his finances as far as what he thinks this can require. Obviously, it's different looking at this project now than it was eight years ago. Prior to entering into further discussions, we hired somebody to do a kind of inspect the building with a drone. And. Look, the building doesn't have a roof on it, like section of it. I think that's. Significant, significant repair. And again, I'm hoping that it's to the point where it's. The buildings, they're creeping up in my, in my opinion, as to being almost having to be demolished. So the one thing I know and there's definitely a demand for some market rate housing in the area. It's a, it's a challenge. There's a lot of outdated stuff. It's, I feel it's very hard to retain young professionals in the area. And I understand that there's at least a handful of affordable housing projects going on through Jerry Willard and some other projects, I believe in the Stadium District. And I think it's just a good opportunity to look at also a market rate project. Scaling down, I think, if I'm correct, I think he had like fifty-eight units in these buildings without getting into them and really taking some time. I think we've discussed maybe reducing that down into the thirty or thirty-five or thirty-eight units. Seems a little bit more realistic. It lowers the cost of construction. I think it takes a little bit of pressure off. Parking, which is an issue. So that's, that's where we're at. Certainly can ask any questions of, oh, lots to pipe it and add anything.
No, I think Mark covered most of it pretty well. He and I share similar thinking in a vision for downtown Binghamton and to continue to. And lots of people share this vision, as I'm sure many do in this room, right? To continue to revitalize and make downtown a better place to both live, work and spend time. And so we, we see this building as an opportunity to go one of two directions. Basically dilapidated and gone forever or, you know, potentially restored and an opportunity to extend downtown's presence across the bridge to the near north as, as previously mentioned. And so we'd be excited for the opportunity, but it is a project that poses a lot of risk, a lot of challenges and certainly a lot of construction costs and probably isn't viable without help to make it happen.
I have a couple of questions. So it's. Funding rounds and timeline wise, this is appropriate time to pursue this deal project. It sounds like they're pretty early in. Acquisition and stuff, but it, so this is one year, once a year.
It's once a year. There was a letter of intent, which was due in the later part of March, which we completed and Empire State Development has given us the okay for the city to apply for this project. So they kind of pre-vet them. And then the final application is due, I believe, May twenty-fifth or twenty-third, at which point site control has to be shown. And so as Mark can, you know, work through that site control and under contract process, that is a key, key part of this. The other Restoring York project I couldn't think of right off the top of my head is probably Lost on the South Side. Very similar, a recipient of Restore New York and that helped jumpstart that project.
And there's no question of sort of either or here. There's not something else waiting in the wings that could be applying for this that's not.
No, yeah, the way that it works is that the municipalities are required to identify just one application. And so this is, you know, our application for this year, like one eighty-seven was last year and probably Lost, you know, your pre-work.
I assume that the package is going to end up getting put together for this will be similar to probably Mr. Bishop's sort of package. You'll be back for a pilot and such, you know, to make a test.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, it matches us, I think anybody.
Oh, yeah.
It's a given, yeah.
Is there, would there, is it still qualified for historic tax credits as another incentive?
I believe, I believe so. And I'm not familiar, but I know that he. I think he completed the application for like a part one. I think there's like a part one and a part two or part A, part B. And I believe it would, because it's certainly a historical building. But to what level, there's different tax credits for different types of projects. So, but I'm not, I don't know the extent of, but I do believe it qualifies for some level of historical tax credit.
That's not something that you had factored into your plan from, or is it just?
Everything.
Everything.
Everything. We will, we will seek every type of, every type of funding possible for this project. It's going to be, it really will be necessary.
Now, the, when, when Mr. Mizel did the Lost. I would just, next to a rail yard and there was meat processing, I think, in, when he posted it, it was a darling meats. Maybe it's still, it's still paying. Okay. Anyway, I, I, any, I'm just wondering if there's any environmental possible boogeymen hanging out there from previous uses?
A few cow bones.
But no, but nothing, I don't think there's anything serious.
No, I don't, no, not at all. And if, if there is, it's not like it's, you know, petroleum or anything like that, you know? I don't think that it's. I would say whatever's been there. I mean, listen, he went through the buildings and I think he did some demolition. He, he started some work, he just didn't complete it.
Okay, so it's nice to be able to kind of pick up where they were to some extent. Any. Everything starts going perfectly. What's the, what's the sort of timeline? What's your sense of timeline for?
You know, it's, it's a different world now. I think it's probably an eighteen to twenty-four month project. I think that, so I'm correcting if I'm wrong, in our vision. If the floor plan is, if the footprint is the same on every floor, then we would probably, our goal, probably try to mimic floors so it makes it easier. So we're stacking basically identical design. So you're just repeating the same thing four or five times over. I think that, but obviously none of that work can be done without having a roof. And it's more than the roof and, you know, the whole, the whole roofing system, structural system, the joists, rafter's have totally collapsed. So it's just not a matter of putting a roof on a building. It's, it's, once that's done, I think it's just a matter of moving right up, moving right along. I think that eighteen to twenty-four months is probably a realistic timeframe.
And that's, that's partly why we've discussed actually reducing the number of units as well. We think it makes each unit a little bit nicer, there's a little bit more space. But also, you know, Mark mentioned a few reasons previously. Another one is time horizon, where, you know, to build out fifty-five, sixty units is simply going to take quite a bit longer than thirty-five, forty.
Lot more kicks in the bastards.
Yeah.
Access wise, as far as. Try to picture the curb cuts and stuff over there. Is there any work that you'd be looking to or in the future from the city as far as improving access, streetscape? That's the thing where it's pretty sufficient.
That's a good question, but I don't, I don't think so because interesting enough, if you put Twenty-One North Depot Street in your T P S, it always leads you down Prospect, the Prospect Street on the south side of Elbridge, which takes you around the crack site. So it's an actual street. And when you access there, there's still an entrance into the parking lot of the front of Twenty-One or One North Depot Street. Obviously, if all these units were to be occupied, there'll have to be some parking in the rear and some parking in front. But I don't think it would require any type of changing streets or anything like that.
Um, I, so that you were just thinking a commercial space for the first floor? Or like you said, commercial space, was it just like limited to the first floor is what you were thinking?
I, I think so. And we've even talked about maybe making lower residential units if there's not an element of, or even still splitting the first floor with some residential and some commercial. If it would be a little bit friendlier for maybe some elderly people, retirees. Or exploring also doing residential on it. It's not, it's not ground floor like ground level, it's still.
Still loaded up.
It's like an, it's elevated. So either way, you have to have some sort of ramp or set of stairs or to access the building. You just live on the first floor, which would be, you know, eight feet off or six feet off the ground.
And to dedicate the entire first floor to commercial lends itself to parking issues because anyone taking on that square, amount of square footage is going to have a high number of employees and a high number of expected customers or depending on the nature of the business. And so combine that with, you know, the number of residential units and we just envision difficulties with, with parking. So in terms of the commercial space, we talked about maintaining perhaps a smaller commercial space in combination with additional residential units.
Trying to know that so many there often off the top of your head, is it covered by the downtown sort of parking regulations versus?
I don't, I don't know the zoning off the top of my head.
I think one of the things that drives me nuts is just like the terms around like. There's like affordable housing and there's market rate housing, but I think like identifying like a rental number is like more useful because I think those terms get thrown around a lot. And, you know, do you have like an anticipated number that you're like shooting for, for rental rate for like a two bedroom or a one bedroom?
I think this is just a guess. I would say somewhere between sixteen hundred and twenty-two hundred dollars for a two bedroom. I mean, one bedroom sixteen, two bedroom maybe two thousand and twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, I mean, I think it largely depends on what the project costs. Ultimately, when you're going into these development projects, what, what you are forced to collect and rent is largely dependent on what your debt service is and what money goes into developing the project. And so it's really difficult to say, but I think that range is fair. I think we're trying to create nice spaces that working professionals can feel, you know, they're living in quality, nice, safe, happy to come home, proud of the space that they live in type, type units. And so in order to accomplish that, you have to go a little bit higher on your finish levels, a little bit higher on the look and feel of the place, the, you know, landscaping out front, the hallways, everything. We want to create a space where, you know, people are proud to call that home and, you know, create a space that working professionals can, can, can reside in. And I, I think a lower price point than fifty front for sure. You know, they've kind of created an example of what a, a complex can be that, that meets that need of working professionals in, in the area and fills that niche, but they're quite, quite expensive and we'd be well below that in the range that he's discussing.
Thank you. And there's like vagueness in this resolution where it says it's up to forty apartments and then so that could be like, we could end up with two apartments in there, right? So would you be opposed to trying to lock in as like a minimum number?
So the, all this is, is what the state requires for us to apply. Upon an award, the state will set the covenants for the money, right? And so it's really between then, at that point, Empire State Development and the developers. You know, these, what we have to do is just to basically apply for the funding. So, I mean, any, any sort of like requirements wouldn't come from our resolution. Setting the, or allowing us to apply would actually come from the state saying, we're not going to give you, you know, up to three million dollars of into, unless you have these kind of goals or benchmarks as part of the project.
Do you have any commitment to using local labor unions? Is that something that's a daily practice for you or?
Um. Again, I think it's Christ weapon, you know, I've used both. Unions and not labor on projects, so it depends.
Yeah, I think that's all I have. How many, the side that is finished, how many units are over there?
Nine.
Nine, okay. I feel like it's the One North Depot thing overall is just kind of been like such a mystery. I mean, you went over a lot of it, but it's just like there'd be announcements and like.
Yeah.
Nothing happens. So then I, yeah, you hear whispers about, oh, work's being done. So it'd be, it'd be cool to get something going in there.
Oh, work's being done.
Yeah.
Very, it's done very quietly.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you would know, but this was like, this was from, since when I was like sixteen or something.
Could I ask, I think we all agree would be, you know, amazing if the project got done and it turned out to be a success. Do you, do you have any concerns or immediate concerns that come into your mind when, when we talk through this project?
Um, not specifically, I think, yeah, I need to, I just kind of like process everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like. It's better than having a vacant structure, like anything is better than having a vacant, like not functional structure.
This is also, you know, should be on the cover of the Restore New York application, right? It's vacant, it's, could become blighted, it's historic. I mean, it's, it hits off a lot of the different measures that I think the state is looking for when they develop the Restore New York program. It basically checks off every box they have, really.
Yeah, I've got, I don't know anything else. So, thank you guys. I think if you want to stick around and talk about.
I'll stick around.
Jerry's project.
You guys don't work for the First Ward Action, do you?
Where's this project?
Scatter site on the First Ward Front Street.
Jerry doesn't shuffle them.
Yeah. So just in terms of timelines, so these folks know.
I mean, I would, I would sign this out and support, support that council meeting. Chairman.
Let me contemplate it.
Yeah, just that there's the public hearing at the next business meeting and that will let you know, you know, when it actually gets added to the agenda. It might be at that meeting, it might be at the first meeting in May. But certainly before the May. May deadline, yeah.
Let me just throw a couple of questions out there as well. If it's not this, what we're proposing, you know, we're protesting. What's the next step? What's the next plan?
Oh, I, I, I mean, for, I mean, we have nothing on deck for this money apparently. Oh, I I I mean, for, I mean, we have nothing on deck for this money apparently. Um, and then I I have would have concerns, but yes, the building is slowly failing.
Well, what would you envision there?
No, I I don't, I'm not disagreeing with this project. Like, I I I think uh market rate housing is the answer.
I haven't thought about it, so I haven't, I don't have a vision for it.
I, I mean, I, in fact, I think this is, uh, I'm pretty sure Mr. Bishop was trying to put students over there. I think we have. A fair number of young professionals and stuff that would be interested in this space, so I think it's a better use of what was probably.
Yeah, I think, I I do not think that place is, you know, best uses.
No, I'm saying he had fifty eight, he had fifty eight beds in there for that reason.
And then that's actually a good point because we've talked about that and it didn't get brought up in the meeting is we're, it's not that we're anti-student, but we're. Perhaps, um, you know, we just discussed not renting to students in this particular project.
Yeah, look, I I think that uh, and we're huge supporters of BU, I think that they certainly add a lot to the area. But I think that um. I think my opinion is that we're at this point capped out on student projects. I think we just need to start focusing that. Good solid jobs and and places for people to live with those good solid jobs.
And my understanding, again, using Fifty Front Street, which I'm sure everyone's aware of that project, my understanding is is they have. Quite a waiting list there and several of the people that I know that actually do live there. You know, they're in a bit of a conundrum because they feel the rent is very high and it is. I mean, their one bedrooms approach three thousand in some units. Um, and so rent is high, but they also don't feel there's a lot of competitive alternatives if you want to be a working professional and still. Experience the vibrancy of downtown, live walkable to downtown. You know, a lot of the development projects are geared towards students, so very small units and you might have students as neighbors, loud, et cetera. There's just not a whole lot of alternative for for the waiting list that's that's sitting there and and the people who aren't on the waiting list who might be interested in. In something similar, so we're really trying to fill that niche of something, you know, affordable, less expensive, but also, you know. Geared towards working professionals as opposed to to the student body.
Sure.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
All right.
Next item is. RL twenty four dash seventy two. Resolution supporting Broom County's application for funding of the Empire State Development Corporation to start. New York Communities Initiative, eight.
You heard from Jerry, length on the project, uh, the the one difference is that. Uh, a public hearing is not required, it's just a resolution from the host municipality. Broom County is doing for this project, what we're doing for.
So that's how we're getting two applications in for Binghamton.
That's correct, yep.
Depot Street is.
The city's application, yep.
Jerry's is, or First Reaction House, I should say, is county.
That's correct.
But we still need to do a resolution.
That's correct, and you know, I um. The county's been great to work with. I I basically went to Jason and said, I think we've got two great applications. We're limited. Um, the county didn't have anything that was kind of ready. And I think, you know, both of these have got a great shot at being funded. Um, and, you know. It was, it was great for Bantin that we could get, you know, county could have applied really anywhere in the county and we uh were getting two.
And I think it's just about the affordable housing project and we have a market rate project.
Yep. Um, so like I said, I know, I know Jerry talked that length at the previous meeting, so. I'm not sure I can add anything.
No, but you, I didn't understand how we were doing two and a six places, so that's.
What's the dollar mark for this?
That is part of the attachment.
I can look at my email quick if you want to see. So this would be.
Because the county is doing it, uh. They're asking for, again, they're up to three million dollars and it will be um. Because county planning is doing the actual LOI, so. Trying to estimate the total project cost is fourteen point five. For the first ward. And they're going to apply for up to three million and then the thing with um Jerry's project specifically is you gotta get extra points if there's lead. Abatement work, so depending on what comes back. Yeah, um, obviously, you know, it's whatever maximum amount you can get and he also gets some extra money for an affordable component too.
So he's, all right, there was the last meeting talking about like the home ESG, is that like the right? Money that was like being put together with the planning department. It was like, see, it's like not CDPG, but it.
It's CDPG dash CV, yeah, so there was the care, around five hundred and seventy five thousand roughly, something like that. Yeah, uh, and I, what is, has that been voted on already or no?
That's, that's coming.
Okay.
It's been, it's been signed out.
Okay, so you have, so that's kind of the city's um. Uh, support of that project as they chase after the nine percent tax credits. Then Restore would hopefully be another local funding source, which helps close the gap, or excuse me, state funding source, helps close gap.
I don't know, I've, we've heard a lot from Jerry, so. And then still, we're targeting thirty seven units. This is. Yeah, and then I think he said there's only maybe one or two of these that are occupied currently.
Uh, if that's what he would know better than I would, the the most, the latest, but that's my understanding as well.
All right. I don't think I have anything else for this one. We, we could have it written in writing with the application. The amount of funding the application is. So the idea.
What I will get the council if it hasn't been already and I just couldn't find it is Broom County's letter of intent to apply.
Okay.
Does that work? So that would have a little.
We also, any other questions?
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah.
Welcome to stick around at three thirty and we can talk TPS. Oh, uh, I make a motion to insurance.